We certify the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Good evening and welcome to Culture Wonders, which is the always open, upgradable meeting of Sac Harbor Village Board of Trustees. A motion with introductions, a local law to bring forward some changes to our procurement policy. And I can amend a motion to use Local Law Number 50 for procurement policy implying new current medical standards and general use for law.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Second, although it's certainly favorite, same eye.
Eye.
For the matter of fact. Do we go to the public hearing on that now?
No, it's following that will be the September meeting.
You're in your time, right?
No, just like we've we've got that need to.
You just tell them all that.
Yeah. Where is the one?
Good evening. We are live and we just come behind.
Doesn't sound like my Mac, does it?
And who are fellow participants. So far, so far, it looks like, looks like us. It's a start in your direction. I know that everybody is. To continue two public hearings. First is the local law stemming from the temporary standing for it's party to grant second plan use and use activity. And this is the matter we had before last month. We went to the Shepherd County Planning Board on, we can go today. And our moratorium was approved by the board. And this is the enactment, the formal enactment of the moratorium for the period from now till the first March. So this is, is there a motion to enact the moratorium?
Well, first, we're going to have a public hearing. There's a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, is there a motion to open a public hearing on this matter? Second.
Second.
Who was the favor? Same eye?
Eye.
The public hearing is open. I would invite anyone who cares to make a comment on this matter. All right, seeing none, we invite a motion to close the public hearing.
Open.
Second.
Second.
Although it's a favorite, same eye.
Eye.
Opposed. Motion is agreed. Second is a continued public hearing.
Mayor, any motion to adopt or continue this?
One second. I'll get back to this. The most, the Chair would hear a motion to enact, adopt local law number two, the number is not there, but the moratorium of the law has just occurred in the public hearing. Very much. So is there a second?
Second.
Although it's a favorite, same eye.
Eye.
Opposed. Matter is agreed. Now to the public hearing. And this is on the code amendments to the section 300 of the Sac Harbor Village Overhaul and Waterfront District Regulations. We opened that to have a hearing last month. That process remains open. Work is going forward. And the matter here tonight, I don't think takes an action.
I'm helping with that.
Right. So the public hearing is open. Anyone care to be heard on this matter? Please identify yourself.
Hello, I'm Peter Ginnay. From 165 Division Street, born and raised in Sac Harbor. And I'm a member of the Board of Save Sac Harbor. Now, and I'd like to read a letter from the Board of Save Sac Harbor about the current waterflood overlay. Safe Sac Harbor is dedicated to preserve, protecting, restore, character, scale, and quality of life in our village. As you know, we closely follow the development of proposed waterfunds on the overlay. We want to express our support for the overlay as vital measure to help restrain overdevelopment and enhance public access to waterfront. The current draft plan has been approved and perhaps the overlay district can be expanded. But there's widespread agreement in Sac Harbor that development pressure has reached a critical point. We urge you, the trustees, not to throw away the work already done by the Waterfront Committee. The important benefits of the overlay include, one, keeping residential development such as the condominiums now rising on West Water Street off waterfront. Together with the requirement for beauty sheds and water and height reductions in Subzone B. This will help to preserve the waterfront as a major amenity for Sac Harbor. Two, requiring new commercial buildings to be floodproof to FEMA requirements without raising their ground floors high above street level. Three, requiring windows along the street walls of new buildings instead of playing façades that make for an unadvised streetscape. One concern that we want to raise is that the overlay proposes to allow developers a third-story height bonus in exchange for improved pedestrian access to water plus other public benefits. We support improving pedestrian access to water. But if we are to allow height bonuses on our waterfront, the village must subject those public benefits to close scrutiny and be sure they are not removed or degraded once their bargaining purpose has been served. The current version states in section 3.1.4, one of the public benefits a developer may offer in requesting a height bonus is preservation and adaptive reuse of historic building. But preserving our historic buildings is already required within the storage district, which includes the waterfront overlay area. We submit that that should not be considered an extra public benefit contributing toward height bonus. We urge a close review of all the benefits discussed in this section of the draft overlay. We thank you for the opportunity to comment on the waterfront overlay. Thank you for your efforts to preserve the historic character of Sac Harbor. From the Board of Sac Harbor.
Thank you, Mr. Ginnay, for those thoughtful comments. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will continue the public hearing will remain open going forward. And invite, we're certainly open to receiving written commentary at any point during this process. Is there a motion to continue the public hearing open until next week, until December?
Open.
Is there a second? Although it's a favorite, same eye.
Eye.
Opposed. Matter is agreed to. The public hearing remains open. Next up, we approve meetings, minutes of meetings from rejected session held on July 13, 2021. The regular meetings held on July 13, 2021, and the minutes in the possession executive session held on July 27, 2023. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Second. Although it's a favorite, same eye.
Eye.
Opposed. Next up, Tim, both our treasurer, treasurers.
This is our June, February report. Again, this is the first month of the year. Not much activity. Everything's in line, purchasing, having to go along, obviously, or having to end the year. So there's not really much happening, I would say. The only other thing I do want to mention, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but the June, May, and year ending, it's unedited, but I did want to mention that that you did have a general fund balance, excess fund balance of 1.5 million. But this was again added against our capital outlay. So we had an overall net position of the prior year of 378,500 against unedited. Just I couldn't report that last month.
Tim, let me ask you to address for a moment an item that comes later in the meeting, because I wanted to let you go home to your bodily duties. We have a finance matter which is next item, section, number. I'm sorry, yes, these are the points that you just explained that.
We have outstanding bond for longboard. And we're going to extend this bond for another year. And now that we're going through a second year, we do have the principal payment this year. This was not called for attention, so we are going to have some appropriate fund balance for this to pay for this principal, first principal payment of this debt.
I mean, your motion to approve resolution after amendment two, authorizing budgeting and appropriate fund to move on and dispay the notes of principle. There are much more. Bob, is there a second?
Second.
And in discussion, although it's a favorite, same eye.
Eye.
Matter is agreed to. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Yes, we hear a motion to approve the treasurers' report, which is taken effect.
So. Second.
Although it's a favorite, same eye.
Eye.
Opposed. The report is approved. Next up, I have no discussion I can view. And we amend the public comment, verse 2. Then the rate is a 15-minute session for, I'm sorry, our normal, and we ask you to agree with the comments agreement.
Hello, good evening. I have a letter that I'm going to read to you. Oh, I'm sorry. Mary Ann Eddy, 96 Hampton Street. I'm the Chair of the Harbor Committee. And there are many members of the Harbor Committee that are also here tonight. An issue came up that we discussed quite a bit on Thursday night. And rather than go through this in a more formal way and getting on the agenda, we wrote a letter and I'm going to read that letter to you now. If there's any questions, we can discuss it briefly after that. So this is addressed to the Mayor, the Board of Trustees. And it's concerning the proposed upgrade septic system at Haven Speech by the town of East Hampton. Dear Mayor LaRaca and members of the Board. At its meeting of August 5th, 2021, the Harbor Committee discussed the above reference project. First, there can be no question that Haven Speech is an important recreational resource for the village. The village should lead by example by upgrading the facility to provide state-of-the-art septic waste removal and water quality protection for our residents. Second, the partnership with the town of East Hampton and the agreement to and the agreement to utilize community preservation fund, water quality funding, the finances upgrade is greatly appreciated. At the same time, we must incorporate the best technology available to ensure success in our effort to improve water quality. In the last few weeks, the proposed sanitary plan for the project dated July 2021 has been made available for us to review. Now, upon examination and discussion by the Harbor Committee, we have concerns that the project as proposed may not provide the most effective and efficient technology unique to the goals of the village to improve septic waste removal and water quality at this location. There may be better options for the village to consider before finalizing this project. Therefore, the committee, excuse me, the Harbor Committee believes that as is required by the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEBRK, the village must examine all reasonable alternatives and technologies for this project. The Harbor Committee wishes to assist the Board of Trustees in this endeavor. Of course, guidance from professionals will also be required, required to make the best decision. And we're available to meet with all or any of you. So all we're really asking is that we have an opportunity before you approve this to look at it, look at other alternatives and try to get the, you know, the cost benefit and just the overall impact of this proposal on to Haven Speech. This is not making a new comfort station there. It's going to be the same cinder block, you know, facility that it is now. It's simply a matter of changing it to a variation on the IA system that we have some concern about. So that's the letter. And I'm going to pass to Beth a signed copy of it for the record.
With you. Thank you, Chairman Eddy.
I just want to say that I reviewed the plans and from what I could see, that first of all, the tanks that are for my system are fiberglass and it's 30 inches of water there. So how are you going to keep those in the grounds and pop them up? I don't know.
Right.
The second most troublesome thing that I saw was they were recommending bringing in 24 inches of fill to accommodate the reaching field.
Right.
Which would substantially transfer the landscape there.
Right.
So I'm open to any suggestions or any other solutions, but those, the original plans that I saw, to me, were not feasible.
Right. We, we have the same issues, the groundwater, the height of the groundwater, and the nature of the, the ground there. So let us get back to you, but with your permission, we're going to talk to a few other people that we respect their opinions. We're not expert ourselves, but we hope that we can get some good input on this. Okay?
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not a varied war shop. I would like to know if you've given any consideration of what I bought up a month ago about hiring a village manager or looking into that as East Hampton has, and as I mentioned, it's time to make, make study of it. It's a very costly mission in endless different ways. Has there been any discussion about that?
As you know, we had a very bad performance. And I think of the old positions is position. It's been created by events we learned in time this fall. But we have not advanced to a point representing public discussion.
And as quickly as I can, have we any update yet on the park mobile, how that's going down the long walk?
We do, and I'll be making a very short presentation this evening during your private seat with a more detailed presentation.
And one further question, have there been any stop work orders on any buildings? And I heard something great lying about a building being torn down with the house that shouldn't have been. But I'm not privy, privy to any of the facts. I just, the rumors that go around or don't in the building. Does anybody know about?
And there are any number of cases every day and in the building department. And all I want to say about organizations working on this, we go. Any other public comment? Yes?
Hi, my name is Yolanda Field. Born in Sac Harbor. So this is about signs, is that okay? This is about signs, is that okay? Can I say about signs? Signs, signs everywhere. Somebody talked to a yard sale the end of July. The person there said that somebody approached him in cold, I guess, to, that he was not allowed to put up any signs for yard sales. So I said, well, I already said 11 minutes years ago when Bob Freed was mayor. Because the same thing happened to me. I had a yard sale and my signs got taken down. And so I asked, why can I not have a sale of yard sign? They said, well, you just can't. And I said, but why? I said, well, you just can't. We'll have to take it up with the village. I said, okay. I said, is it because the, the signs are put on telephone poles, which is a private thing? I said, because I don't do that. Then, no, I said, is it because we put them on trees and you're hurting the living plan? I don't do that. So, yeah, we'll see the village. So I went to the village and Bob Freed was here, Pat Sakowski was here, and I was here. And so I asked, why it's not allowed when all these other signs are allowed? And they really couldn't give me an answer. They looked at each other and I was sitting way back there and they spoke and then they said, Yolanda, can you hear me? And I said, no. But they said, did you hear that? I said, no. And Bob Freed said, we're going to allow two sales a year. You can have six signs generated by the village here. And you have to take them down after the sale is over. I said, that's fair enough. So I came here last week to find out what happened to that law. And I was given this. And Gary showed me, it was dated 1978. I spoke to Bob in 1991. So that law was not updated. And I don't want to put any fingers, but there are also, Gary also said to me, well, you know, most of the signs you see are for nonprofit. And I said, well, not all are nonprofit. He said, we have farmers' market, it's not nonprofit. And we have a boot rental, I'm sorry, boat rental. The other one was enlightened tutors and nannies. So we have signs all over the place. And they're making money and we can't sell our junk, clean out our attic. Not hurting anybody. It's, you know, it's a sign like any other sign. So I'm, I'm asking the village to update to what Bob Freed had already put in place. That it have two, two a year, six signs generated by the village, because the village would determine the size and take them down after. Is that fair enough?
Thank you for that. Counsel will look at the gap in the 70s and 90s. I will say, we are attentive to the deliberation signs. Chief and I put our hands together on some signs on one of the corners just a few days ago. And I think there's a fairly generous policy about yard sale signs. DPW on Monday, the loss to take down signs from the previous weekend, but I'm happy to take a look at this.
Well, according to the one that's outdated, it's one sign on real property and the rest you have to put in the paper. That's the old one that hasn't been updated.
Okay, we will take a look.
Okay, the other thing I wanted to just take a few minutes about parking. And correct me if I'm wrong, but parking used to be, you have to pay on Main Street and Long Warf, and then they took it away on Main Street, right? And they left it on Long Warf.
Yes.
And they left it on Long Warf. Well, I think that's discriminatory for the businesses that are on Long Warf. I someone gave my haircut down there, but, and I can't get a parking place. I don't have the technology, nor do I want all that, you have to have to do stuff. So if I were to get a parking place in the village, if I were to, which is, oh, it's a terrible. I'd have to walk down to Long Warf. And at 39, that's not easy.
Well, the parking at Long Warf is a trial program that runs through a summer state weekend. Or if you believe me, that will have a short report on it during the meeting, but.
Now they tell me you have a couple spaces right in front of the stores, but what are your chances of getting that?
There are just 30 minute space.
Pardon me?
There are just 30 minute spaces, probably.
Well, he cuts my hair unless it's 30 minutes. I just couldn't get the space. That's the problem. It's not, you know.
There's four there. We were hoping that the turnover for 30 minutes would be similar to that on Main Street, which tends to be working with a good feedback on those. So maybe we need more 30 minute spaces, and that'll be all part of the.
We need more space. We need something because all people can't walk down Long Warf much as I would like to.
Isn't the first hour free?
First hour is free, but you do have to participate in with the app, I understand that. That's something that's going to be difficult.
Well, I'll be happy if you can just fix the yard sale problem.
Let's see if we can get us to catch up to 1997.
Yes, yes. This was 1978.
78.
It's a long time ago. I said to him, my kids were two and three then. He goes, what? Kids are two and three. I said, yeah, they're in their 40s now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody has a public comment.
Freed, oh, very good. I'm usually amused at louder. Hi, I'm Lulu Romano. I am a South Hampton local, a Sac Harbor resident. And I think my heart belongs inside through and through. I grew up in South Hampton, never really, you know, like felt that belong. But here, okay, so today, two things. The goodness of James, Thomas, Aiden, Edward. Hello, you guys are in the website, the website, so the website, the Sac Harbor Board. I'm here to talk about, Bob, you're not on the website. I, I know you, Bob, but you're not on the website.
No, you should.
Okay. Oh, yes, oh, yes. I am a freelance video person and right now I am doing work for dance papers predominantly. I want to talk about two things. One, something I believe all of us publicly, we would concur on. Second, something a little more personal. So starting with the public thing. And I can even five minutes after, so excuse me if it's already talked about, but why is the anthem of Sac Harbor beep 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 boom 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 beep? There's so much humping throughout the entire street. And I was doing a video for the restaurant, actually named, same thing after me, not after me, but same name with Lulu's restaurant last weekend. On the streets, the, I had to be like quiet on set so much. And is it, what is it that everyone have to hump every 33 seconds? What, what is, what is the issue? What is the line cause of that? Why there's so much? And then drilling too, drilling. So much drilling, so much humping. I don't understand. The Sac Harbor is so beautiful. And, and then the visually, but like, what's this one? Audioly, audio? Audio wise, it is like a, ah, why? I don't quite understand. That's first. And then second. So growing up in, in the Hamptons, I was the only Asian through and through. And not just like the only Chinese, but the only any kind of Asian. And now that I'm in Sac Harbor, actually I found a little bit of an alliance. Jesse of Stev Sushi, I rented his barbecue last week. He has the cutest little eight-month son, like a meat boss, the cutest. And, and also the, the one directors of Sac Harbor, he is also half Asian. And I was thinking that maybe with the support of town, maybe if you can give some ideas, we can post something where even if it is only, you know, with 00000, 1% of us, something where we celebrate the Asian in us and, and celebrate Asian with all of you guys. Maybe like a cherry blossom festival next spring. And I'm saying this very far ahead, so we have the time for everyone to slowly adjust to this. And so, yeah, it's going to be called A cubed of three S H. So Asian American Alliance of Sac Harbor, because we start small. And I don't even know East Hampton or South Hampton, but I know we're like half African, probably, but it's not the same vibe. But like, I feel like the most accepted and most, you know, once upon a time, Sac Harbor were even part of the Hamptons. We're un-Hamptons. Now we're, I guess, after Kardashian, but let's see if we're here and over, we're bringing that, that promotion of the black people, which is great. But, um, yeah, now that we're here, so these are my two things. One, noises. And two, potentially something celebrating the Asian in us, to me.
Thank you for that. Why people blow their horns as the devil societies horns were planted, I think. And why people feel they have to blow their horn as they do, I think is an unanswered question. As far as an event celebrating Asian, Asian-American population, culture, all of that, I think the. I think the, those who welcome that to the middle of the rocks, I certainly would. I know it's a compliment. So if that develops some in winter, then that, that is spring. I would be happy to work with you on that.
So James, will I talk to you? Hold on. Oh, okay.
Yours over.
What word is it? I don't know. Uh, in exchange, I will, um, I will, no, I literally don't know. Sometimes I'm like, um, so, um, I will, I've got very good photos and videos, so I can, in exchange, I can take some portraits for you guys, because you guys are all very handsome. Remember the website that you know, you just saw the website, the shots like that. So let me, let me take, yeah, and Bob needs a photo. Let me take some professional photos of you guys. I'd be honored. And that's my, um, I, uh,
Thank you.
First session of the committee and proceed to the departmental reports, uh, city reports. I will begin with, uh, waterfront. Uh, we are having one heck of a season. A lot of visitors, a lot of boats, um, extremely busy in the words of the harbor master. And, um, the, uh, sales, uh, the hands that see everything in person, they're trying to take, uh, uh, down on the ride and, uh, the revenues that are produced in support of this community. And the, uh, total, including now ice sales, we put an ice capital on Long Wharf, um, was one hundred nineteen thousand, one hundred thirty-six dollars. So this is a very important effort to strengthen the village. Um, we had, uh, a concerted effort to do inspections of, uh, of the voting, of the community. Uh, and we teamed up with South Hampton, the Bay hospitals, both South Hampton, East Hampton, Marine Patrol, the U.S. Coast Guard, the DRC, EDC Police. Uh, we conducted sixteen inspections, uh, out of which six summonses were instant issues. This is inspections in regard to the sanitary waste, uh, board roads. And, um, uh, the vessels that were inspected were on the list of vessels that were not utilizing our pump out codes. So one picture we get of activity is from the logs of the pump out code. Uh, we know who, uh, are regular users, uh, and, uh, that is help. Uh, and, uh, but the majority of those that were inspected were in compliance, but we are as always concerned about those who are not, and they have recited. Um, the, uh, Department, uh, harbor master, uh, conducted twenty-five Marine patrols during the last month, um, both inside and outside of the border fields, down along the North Haven Peninsula. And, um, there's been a lot of, a lot of loaded activities at a very high level. The calls for service, uh, we've had three vessels adrift during this period. The one for trespassing on a boat, uh, reckless operation, one accident, one overturned vessel. Uh, we assisted in a number of cases. Uh, they were free to sample vessels nearly assisted. Um, we appealed in one speed complaint, uh, one on the subject of the board. Uh, this was a case out ways where an outboard, uh, boat was found encircling itself and with no one on board. Uh, we responded as the, uh, one of the nearby jurisdictions and, uh, uh, fellows had been picked up by a passing sailboat. We fell out of the boat and we participated in capturing the out of control boat and no one was hurt and the incident ended well. Uh, there was one incident truly, uh, one incident in the damaged vessel and, um, same, that was about routine of midsummer, uh, on the waterfront. But the total financial picture, uh, when you take July revenues and you know, we use this computerized service called Datwa where people could book a visit here, we ordered their visit, uh, and that, those categories were up in July. And our year-to-year revenue picture is in twenty twenty to this point, we have seven hundred and seventy-six, uh, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in income. This year, we're at a million eight a million eighty-one, uh, dollars in revenues. So that is a very substantial, a three hundred and fifteen thousand dollar uh, increase on a seven, sixty-seven thousand dollar base. So, uh, business is moving on the waterfront. And as you hear from the report, the number of incidents, um, well handled by the Department, uh, are, you know, not inconsistent with the level of activity that we have. The Public Works Department had a busy period. The you will notice not only to the, uh, green, uh, surfacing of, uh, made of Madison Street by the church, but also on a number of nearby streets. Um, and, um, on the list here at the moment, um, there was a section of, um, from Saint John's, uh, John Street from A to Columbia, from Morrison Street to Caris, uh, on Division Street, Grand to Division on Madison, Glover to Long Island Avenue, to the Vitaly Silver Drive, and Madison Street from Union to Main Street. This was all accomplished smoothly, uh, without significant disturbance or interruption to traffic. And the results are very good looking and, uh, the striking was a part of the, uh, program that went in and being given follow. And so thanks to Public Works, um, sand and debris on roads continues to be undertaken, uh, cleaned up and renewed. Um, there is still some painting of stop lines and other markings, um, extra cutting lanes for preparation. Higgins Beach for the carnival, which is a huge success this year. People came back in record numbers. Uh, a lot of patching going on and, uh, all the park areas and shows continue. So, uh, a very good month, uh, a lot of hard work on part of our department. In this month, we also, I report on the building department. Uh, there's a full report in the packet. I will tell you that, uh, total receipts for building permits was up to twenty-five thousand dollars a month. Uh, the difference between, uh, that and a year ago, uh, is about eleven thousand dollars more. So the building activity, uh, with all of this currently puts on us, um, does result in, uh, some support in forming the income that it produces. Uh, code enforcement was very busy this month as well. Uh, we took an informal place, uh, looked at notices, a lot of initial notices, violations in eighteen cases. Conducted routine inspections in thirty-six. And, um, we have, uh, code enforcement activity on the weekends, which I think is very important as well, particularly in terms of noise and other matters that we hear from the public about. Um, and, uh, we will, uh, have an item further in the meeting. We are appointing a new, uh, senior building inspector, uh, and, uh, department head for the building department. Uh, that will be in, uh, bringing quite a deal. My reports, I return now to trustee, the deputy chief, Tom Marhella, for public safety.
Thank you, Mayor Rocker. After we start with the, say, call the village police department. Say, call the spineless responded to seven hundred and thirty-six calls for service. At four aggravated unlicensed operations, we have two suspended registrations. One ticket for littering, one harassment charge. Uh, we had thirty-six motor vehicle accidents on the month of July. Arrests, three D W I arrests, we had no B B arrests, and fifty-eight uniform traffic stops. Tickets, summons were issued. Additionally, we had one thousand two hundred eighty-six parking tickets issued. That's an increase of a hundred percent from July of last year. So, busy month. And thank you. Thank you, Chief McGuire, and, uh, please thank the officers. Thank you. As far as say, call the fire department goes, say, Harper's rapist responded to a thousand and thirty man hours this month. During the month, the officers and members of the department responded to eighty-nine calls for service. These calls included three motor vehicle accidents, one water rescue in North Sea, and a mutual aid, the Great Champion going along. The fire department would like to thank everybody that came out from the community to support the carnival. It was a huge success. And a lot of work from the members getting set it up, getting it set up and breaking it down. So thank you to the fire departments for that. As far as the ambulance corps goes, uh, in July twenty twenty-one, we had a hundred and one emergency calls. Four work nights, two meetings, four training sessions, one work detail. So that's an increase from, uh, July twenty twenty, we had ninety calls. So that's about, that's slightly up from twenty twenty. For a total man hours of one thousand, one hundred and thirteen. So you can imagine with the increased population that the call volume is, uh, increasing. So that's almost a thousand calls or, I guess, a thousand calls for all emergency services in one month. So thank you to the volunteers and thank you to all police officers. That's my report.
Uh, thank you, Tom. And, uh, Dave Corsh for sewer and bullet prints.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'll start off with sort of, uh, sort of treatment facts under the report for July twenty twenty-one. Total gallons received in the month was three point one two five million gallons. Um, so obviously, business on Main Street is up, but most of this is out of Main Street and restaurants. Total gallons sold to move was eighty-five thousand five hundred. On the memorial process, it's discharged, uh, report, I was forward on eleven twenty-one. So can the DHS inspection date, the next inspection will be ten twenty-five twenty-one. Uh, York State D C inspection date is always open, if you show up. Um, and we had no complaints, uh, in July. And summary of operations, waste water treatment fast going well, under all permitted levels. We're now operating on four basins. There are five fifty thousand gallon basins down there. We're using four out of five right now because the influence goes up and crease as summer seasons pass. Uh, that's contracting for one of our, uh, repair, uh, operations. They were out to finish installing a bunch of the drywall um, to make adjustments and put it back online. This is the new pump that we had installed. Um, it's just that we need to get it online properly. They also executed debris from check valve, the first system. Um, debris was some grease that, uh, was plugging the system. So that's, uh, that was removed. It's a pretty unpractical job to do it, but, uh, that ended a great job of keeping it going. We had one alarm for power surge that was, uh, corrected and it was okay. And the flow increase from June to July was approximately five hundred and eight thousand gallons. So that's good indication of activity on Main Street. As far as, as far as and restaurants go. From grants, on Friday was the closing day. Friday, thirty of July was closing day for New York State's consolidated funding applications. We submitted two. Uh, one was, um, for John Sanders, the work from Park was two hundred and two thousand eight hundred dollar grant request. And this was to complete the section on the boardwalk, which would take you basically from the bridge over to the southwestern end of the park for the Alseco legs. If anybody's familiar with the park, uh, plans, uh, that's an area along the waterfront. So we've submitted a grant for that. Um, the other grant we submitted was to Higgins Beach. And that was a little more complicated, so I'm just gonna re, I that I have here to just describe what that grant is for. Um, the village is applying for funding under the LWOP program to prepare an updated comprehensive watershed analysis for Higgins Beach to provide the basis for identification of drainage improvements at the upper watershed. Higgins Beach receives water from quite a large watershed area north of the beach. So we want to study all of that. So the upper watershed area as well as the park, and also to provide additional recommendations for balancing community public uses of Higgins Beach. Building but not limited to baby beach, dog park, emergency service, finding area, stormwater treatment and other uses based upon input from the village and the community. As this project develops, we get funding that the community input in Higgins Beach is very important. And this is the first time I'm gonna have, uh, like a master plan or holistic view of beach and the water and the uses. So we can plan for the future in an appropriate manner. So both of those applications went in. I will have them posted to the website if anybody's interested in reading them. We showed the applications. They're very glorious. Some parts are interesting, some parts are just very repetitive. But they'll be there for you. I hope we will get some response. Normally toward the end of your grant, so absolutely. Um, I gotta give a little brief report on paid parking. To date, uh, this started, we started three weeks before Memorial Weekend, just to have a soft meeting, so to speak. Um, we were very soft. We had no enforcement for the first couple of months because we didn't want to shock people. You know, this is a big change. Uh, the TCOs were, uh, setting up in tickets. They would be created flyers to put on the windshield, uh, windshield wipers that would show people pre-parking lots and explain the system why we're doing it and how to use it. So anyhow, I will have a much more in-depth report later on in the season. But for now, so far, we've had seven thousand three hundred fewer transactions, um, on the board. Um, most recently, we had four hundred nine transactions this week. And so far, the income to the village after all expenses, thirty-five thousand, one hundred forty-seven dollars, ninety-nine cents. So we find that to be a reasonable amount of money so far in the season. We feel that as we refine to the system, there have been, I've had two written complaints. Um, both people got tickets because they felt the signage was insufficient. Uh, one of them said, I live and I love, I live here and I love paid parking. I think it's fantastic. Um, the point of the sign was a little better. I got a ticket which I'm happy to pay for. So we're gonna look at all that. We were, because this is temporary, not so temporary, but it was experimental. We didn't want to put any sort of proper infrastructure down there at all in case it was, you know, didn't work out. We could remove everything and leave leave nothing behind. So I think if we do this later in the year, we'll be in a position to upgrade signage, uh, we have to move ahead for the next summer. Um, but I think the income is wonderful for the village. It can be convenient. I know we have home lighting school earlier. So we may have to look at more thirty minute spaces, but these are all issues that we can talk about as a community and move ahead. Um, we actually can come and serve you all. I think I've set it up for now, so.
Well, thank you. We like reports that involve revenues. Appreciate that. Um, I, um, announced, uh, a couple of weeks ago now, the formation of a housing initiative, a horrible housing initiative for the village, um, and colleagues that agreed to co-chair that. The newest trustee and now a veteran trustee. And, uh, we are just getting our arms around the subject and just starting out.
Sure. That's pretty much it. We're just getting started. I found it amusing to, to quantify the problem in some way. And I realized that this building we're in right now has a roughly three thousand, thirty-five hundred square foot, um, footprint. And if you wanted to get a hundred apartments at a thousand square feet each on a footprint this size, it'd be thirty-five story building, thirty-five to forty. So I just kind of thought that was a nice way of just kind of visualizing. And that's only a hundred apartments. So, uh, we're just starting now. And we're starting to, I'm not suggesting we vote for it. Yeah, just getting our, our, your arms around it and, and, um, looking at a lot of different things. Uh, Jim has somebody from the, uh, Long Island Housing Commission coming next week. Uh, we're talking to a few people. And we're just starting to get our, uh, starting to address the issue, which is clearly
And finally, uh, and Dave is, uh, reporting on Mash Park and says you're justice court in the court of housing, but, uh, I was the liaison before my recent um, election to the court and to the transition of Ed will be our liaison going forward. Uh, the report I didn't make, um, I'll just give you the headline on it. Uh, I met with the judge today. Um, the court is, uh, back to live session. Um, the court is, uh, back to live session in the waiting room. What you see is a setup for that. And, uh, we look forward to level of activity that we had a pre-COVID, uh, what if it was able to manage during, uh, COVID. Uh, some of the changes that came to us from the Office of Court Administration of Albany, um, including some amnesty and some reduction in, uh, key, uh, uh, delinquent, uh, tickets and so forth along. Uh, so the net effect of all of that is that the revenues associated with the quarter are significantly below what they had been in recent years. And, uh, best case, we, uh, began to talk about today was that at the rate things are reemerging, without, uh, Delta or other setback. Uh, the problem will be in the next fiscal year where we're back to the level of, like, activity and associated revenues come back at where we're at. So it's a budget issue, but more importantly, it's a justice issue that the court applies itself and made up and running. And, uh, being timely needs work and one of the grandest accomplishments of something is to get, uh, a great good pace in the court. And we hope to continue that and raise that issue as we go forward. With that said, uh, trustee Nick.
Thank you, Mayor Rocker. Um, I'll give a brief report on the park board. Um, which has no revenues associated with it since the park was a not-for-profit. Um, but it's a wonderful asset for the community and that's a job of, uh, being a steward for that asset. Been a busy summer for the park. They had, um, two meetings since our, two full meetings since our last board meeting. And one conversation with the school board as well. Continues to be busy with a lot of music groups, including, um, South Hampton's, Ham's Summer Park Camp, which has over a hundred children attending. Um, the Whales Beach Baseball League team from Sag Harbor, Super Soccer, Men's Adele Park Ball, probably artists and writers softball group, um, any other groups in addition to maintaining the grounds around our pond. So it does a fantastic job as a not-for-profit, but very low funding. We're also just getting conversations with the park board and the school on uh, continued use of the school fields, of the park fields for the school athletic teams. And hopefully, um, helping to provide a longer-term solution for that.
Uh, thank you. That concludes our reports. A motion to accept the department reports. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, if I say aye?
Aye.
Close, without, uh, the screen too. Now, I have those first ones for review. Um, and our actions and you don't have to put the action items. One, uh, Jennifer Parkus, my tribe, Michigan, I'm adding order five. My job and fact of, anyway, we, uh, I'm, uh, Sam Logan as part of that. Requesting, and my chest, place to sign the grants. Action. All those in favor, if I say aye?
Aye.
Motion to read two. All right. Timothy Scarrano, uh, on behalf of the President of this church and by asking three requests for to submit all applications to the construction of a community cafe located adjacent to the church. Support the effort. Uh, this is the topic of my, on me, on us, uh, and the media. With their motion, uh, to grant this. All those in favor, if I say aye?
Aye.
Which does he reach? Item number three, Jennifer Segre, request special event permit for outdoor community gathering. Recognizing artists, artists and craft people to be held in fifty-sixth each avenue on August twenty eighth, thanks during the afternoon. Is there a motion?
I agree.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, if I say aye?
Aye.
Uh, for resolutions, uh, regarding Sag Harbor Community Trust, Housing Trust, Cooperated. Um, they recently received, uh, new funds from several two more units. Uh, Washington Factory, those funds, uh, have been and are being transferred over to the trust. Motion to waive the transfer. All those in favor, if I say aye?
Aye.
The Sag Harbor Voice Council request permission to boot on long war, so not those in soda during the Harbor Fest celebration. And it's a good call to remind everybody that Harbor Fest is back. The, uh, the weekend following Labor Day. And I think it's going to be welcomed by everybody in Sag Harbor. It's a great event. And it's great for, uh, some motions to, uh, the booth by the voice cuts.
So moved.
Second, the, well, maybe if I say aye?
Aye.
Uh, the Sarah Cochran on the path of edge and center, request special event permit for live performance of Car Orchestra by the, um, internationally known artist Laurie Anderson, performance artist. Uh, widely known for innovative and interesting artistic expression is going to put on a, a car orchestra right down at Haven's Beach on the eighteenth of September. In connection with the match at the church of Arceno on Madison Street. And, um, I see, uh, April here, are you, here to speak on this?
Um, so.
Or Sarah? Okay. I will do my best. And, um, the car orchestra consists of cars loaded with horns in a coordinated rhythm, integral integrated fashion. And, um, um, I think, uh, should be a pretty interesting. Before I end this performance. And that is on eight, September eighteenth. And the motion to. The, and a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, if I say aye?
Aye.
And who knows who we're going to be coming before that on Main Street. And you have a reveal. We're on short period time. Main Street was the audition.
It was a fantastic call.
I, I just have one question to April or Sarah. Is this gonna be like a continuous or is it gonna be breaks in between numbers or? Sure. I mean, it's already been approved on this period because I live right over there.
I see Laurie Anderson is creating a score. It will be twenty minutes. It is not, it is a musical score. There will be moments of crescendo, but it will not be a wall of sound. This is not a heavy metal concert.
Thank you.
And, uh, item number seven, a request from Deborah O'Brien, President of the Ambulance Corps, to accept a resignation of Corey Harriels. Name through, uh, private.
I'll make the motion.
Second? All those in favor, if I say aye? Deborah O'Brien, President of the Corps, I request authorization to add Cassandra Arbia, Arbaya, and Abigail Hallick to the insurance rolls as probationary members of the Corps.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, if I say aye?
Aye.
Resolution to submit an application for the New York State G F. Thank you, House of Representatives.
Um, this is an application that's worth six and ten dollars up to thirty thousand dollars. Um, I believe they have a couple of ideas. One is just for, um, a new stamping mission every day. Also considering, um, hitting the photos possibly to make the main priorities on our first and second floor in our living room. I'm sure we can hit some photos on that. So we'll get a, um, four hundred and fifty.
And this is, uh, this is a routine, uh, grant application that we've done, uh, since. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, if I say aye?
Aye.
Close, motion is agreed to. Um, Deborah O'Brien, uh, President of the Ambulance, request authorization to hire Corey Henning from uh, the M T D Emergency Medical Technician Basin, uh, on, as an on-call M T driver at the rate of twenty dollars and fifty cents now.
I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, if I say aye?
Aye.
I oppose, uh, the, uh, resolution of Brian, uh, on the resume all right, to sign an agreement with Mezziano Consulting, covering for consulting services. Uh, this is bringing on, uh, some new talent to assist us in world grant writing and grant acquisition, uh, which is a very important part of, um, village government. Uh, being able to finance the number of the Uchi activities that we have. Uh, name and head that up for the village very effectively. And this is a, uh, a good appointment that, uh, feels strongly with our, our grant activity.
I agree. And the management of grants, when the word is another big aspect of this, I think, kind of, it's valuable. Speaking language and understanding.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, if I say aye?
Aye.
Um, a resolution, uh, for this month's funding transfer.
Mayor, I'm sorry. There was one amendment to that resolution after consulting with the village attorney. She, she recommended that we, uh, have an end to the term, the end of the fiscal year, which will begin the first of two thousand twenty-two and then revisit it again. And this will, yeah.
Anything with a, a.
Yes, we got it.
Do we need to vote on that or?
No, I think it was part of the.
It was part of the amendment. Okay.
I have to amend it. I just wanted to mention that it's not physical, not the resolution right now.
Actually, uh, motion passes as a matter of fact. Thank you. Uh, next up is, uh, I have twelve, the August twenty twenty-one, the, uh, the. Second?
Second.
All those in favor, if I say aye?
Aye.
Um, uh, I think adopting a social media policy. Um, having to have a social media policy is a good thing. This year, they may, and we are adopting policy, uh, protocols and behaviors, uh, associated with this activity, as, as we understand it. And, uh, this is, uh, a process that many smaller governments are now going through uh, to have a policy placed to regulate, um, the boys' activity of the village and community in this regard. Is there a motion to, uh, item number thirteen?
I'll make the motion.
Second? Is there a second? Um, all those in favor, if I say aye?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Uh, Lisa Stenson, there's a war, Michael Chum of Sag Harbor Hills Improvement Association. Uh, on the men, the hours of the annual Labor Day party that, uh, came up. Um, we already approved this, but they wanted, uh, to spend the hours to start earlier than, uh. Is there a motion? Favoring to take, I say aye?
Aye.
Item number fifteen, resolution to appropriate the excess fund balance of Atlas Department budget for years in nineteen and twenty, planning to fund, to fund reserves. Item number fifteen, resolution to appropriate the excess fund balance of Atlas Department budget years in nineteen twenty-two to fund reserves. This is a. Nice. For the amounts for. Out of the two together, rather than fifteen sixteen. Appropriating excess fund balance. Resolution for appropriating excess fund balances required for the years twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and the year twenty twenty-one. Fund reserves.
Great motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, if I say aye.
Aye.
Through Austin Guaranty, please request authorization to consult two new stop signs at Madison Street intersection in Paris Street. From northbound to southbound, this is a starting process that one trail will require a little walk. This is just initiation.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second. Aye.
Two. Item number twenty, keep request authorization to hire Marcus Croftman as a lifeguard at the rate of fifteen fifty per hour. Effective July twenty-third. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, if I say aye.
Aye.
And next is item twenty-one, with regret, we accept the resignation of James Hutton as a member of the planning board, thanks to me. Justice out of jurisdiction, he's a valued member of this community, his family well-known to all of us. And we were sorry to see him go. And valued the service that he has given, but it is a new club. And so I respectfully invite the President to motion to accept this resignation. I don't. Disregard to four thousand. I think, I don't want to get into personal territory in this net, but I think four thousand is a part of the structure. A second? Aye.
Aye.
Number twenty-two, authorizing a budget amendment from the inappropriate fund house.
So we did that, yeah.
Twenty-three, authorizing payments to Cityscape Consultants Incorporated. These are consultants on the placement, construction of two cell towers, one in the cube, and one in the. This covers the additional. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, if I say aye.
Aye.
Motion is agreed to. Item number twenty-four, Michelle Rosi of SAFE, Safe in San Harbor, Slant Hugs Incorporated. Request authorization to bring attention to overdose awareness plan addiction recovery month on September one. From seventy-nine to the end of April, are requesting to waive the application submission.
It's really good organization, I have some personal experience with Huggs. I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Aye.
Close. John Leonard of the San Harbor Chamber of Commerce, request permission to make the following amendments to special event permit for Harbor Fest. Hosting a petting zoo on Long War during Harbor Fest. Drop off court buddies dumpsters on the evening of Friday, September tenth, and pick up on Monday the thirteenth. And I should mention that as part of that, thanks you, they will be colleagues for coming up. And so it's functional. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. If I say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Kelly Downs, President of the San Harbor American Rescue Association, request authorization to amend special. Include the use of Marine Park on twenty-fourth and Forte Eight, yeah. This is adding evening, early evening event to the two-day weekend, so it's really. Now run for a thought, I'm trying to through. And this, like Harbor Fest, of events for the section turn of the property. Nice event. Is there a motion to approve? Second. All those. Aye.
Aye.
Kevin O'Brien, San Harbor Fire Department, request permission to have a family picnic for members at Emmens Beach on August twenty-second, ten AM to four A.M.
I'll get there. Yeah, just looking out that we like to move, usually we do the picnic. On east, the far eastern side. Right, we could say a whole time, yeah, we'd like to do it in the center behind, if that happens with water there in the coast, so we have to move to that area.
Since you know about that.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, if I say aye.
Aye.
Princess Gironi, Secretary of Fire Department, request the following, Rookine Schuman of Murray Hill, Hoes and Miranda, Roolies. Who has rules of the flight page of the United American Probationary Full Act of Members Status. And to accept the application of Hamish McAllen of the Bar Hill Hoes, request that his name be placed on the roles as active probationary. All those in favor, if I say aye.
Aye.
And say congratulations to Keith, and to Miranda, and welcome to Hamish. Best spirits in this community that these folks have come to. All those in favor, if I say aye.
Aye, so there's two members that we've got more probation required upon, and we have a new member. And we should also have two members that were from the Angeles Court, so slowly. Let's hope we can get some affordable housing. Stay here.
Next up, August twenty-first, authorize payment for the Empire State Development Grant on the Long War Project. Another thing, steps along that long trail, and. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, if I say aye.
Aye.
Motion is agreed to. Resolution today, approving the termination of James A. Estezito, as probationary appointment as senior building inspector. A second?
Second.
All those in favor, if I say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Next, approving the appointment of Peter Sarich as interim senior building inspector. This is a man who assisted us during the transition in the spring, and he will assist us again now on a part-time basis. Is there a motion? And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, if I say aye.
Aye.
And next up is the motion approving the fragment of Christopher M. Talbot as senior building inspector of the Village of San Harbor. Effective on the thirtieth of, his birthday will be the thirtieth of August. Is there a motion? Who? Second?
Second.
Who was the favorite, if I say aye?
Aye.
We welcome Mr. Talbot to the village, he's a longtime experienced building official. And he comes to us in a very busy time, as well, in special activity in the village. And we look forward to welcoming him. Next up is amendment to the existing contract of Cameron Engineering, to provide technical assistance to attain clients with. But this is the so-called eight-one-one call process. Eight-one-one call is a device that's been developed in recent times where, when there will be street openings. And earth open, associated utilities, water mains, gas lines, telecommunications, whatever. It's a process that triggers communications among the between all the people who have stuff in the ground. And the absence of it can create problems, as we learn. So this is, to have the process begin, putting us into that system, it takes investment. But I mean, very much worth the activity. Have in the coming months, we have more activity by national grid at others in our streets. And so this is a necessary public management, but also public safety. So is there a motion to make this point?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, if I say aye.
Aye.
Prove. Prove, and those I like to take them in the run. Seven, number eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. And the mouse and the large truck taking. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Was there any, if I say aye.
Aye.
Then concludes, and stand before the meeting, but we are again open to comment in the remaining twenty minutes. Yet, if you want to speak, we support, and I don't like to jump.
Can I say something about the hearing? I know we need to petition because. Here I should be. No, I know we need this petition, I understand that. But it is hard to hear some of you people. You're not talking as loudly as you might be able to, or into the mic. And we miss quite a bit of this and that. So I just hope you work on that a little bit, for all, the sake of everybody in the room. I've heard that after the last meeting, I wasn't the only one who was noticing that less. You know I'm very direct and not, but my purpose is the village. And I have a very loud voice, Jim, and always have had.
Thank you, no, that's. Anyone else?
We want, mention one thing, item number twenty-four, if we must, on agenda, the Safe in San Harbor. They have also requested authorization to put up purple light bulbs on the windmill and the cupola. Cupola unfortunately did the cell tower, it has rusted windows, and it's been contaminated.
Right. The further explains, what Beth is mentioning is, this outfit has adopted a sort of a signature color of purple. Associated as so many of these focus groups that try to draw attention to an issue. And we were happy to entertain them, people of the project involving cell tower, we really can't do that. And the windmill has been available to them in the past, and it's a matter of working that way. That's still what they want to do.
I'll make the motion if you're.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, if I say aye.
Aye.
Anybody else, anyone else? All right, thank you all very much, I will see you in September, have a good, have a rest of your summer, a great holiday, Labor Day. I will see you in September. Motion to adjourn? Second?
Second. Aye.
It's day one, but.
Got a good time, thank you.
All those. No comment, absolutely no comment. No, Jim, so actually.
Okay.
Yes.
It was kind of weak, so.
I did, I did, I did. Really, I came into work, and I stopped it. Drive that delay bike, and it's kind of fun to ride it up there. I just, beautiful assistance.
Yeah, well, we're going to ask another lot, why are people asking three questions? Maybe, I think, greatest question ever, we haven't asked, we're going to have to answer. It's really going to depress the anger.
Thanks for that, you were a little nice.
And they just want every genre, or this from, they knew from rappers to rock to everything.
So when I move her, time, that's constantly, I started watching it, like, watched about ninety seconds, fifty seconds. Yeah. But then, yeah, so I'm eating my, I'm eating a sandwich, and I had to watch it.
Yeah, that's a blast. Because it's, yes, so. So she said, she was like, thirty-five. I guess you, she has to arrange her cards. I don't know.
Check the wins.
Yeah, check the wins out, because in all the Toyota section over here, there's a.